Good evening, everyone. Um, it is now six P M. And I'm gonna call this meeting to order and we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, are Lawrence and Bill signed?
Yes, yes.
Okay, approval of this week's agenda.
I think a motion will approve the agenda.
All in favor? Okay, um, minutes of last week's meeting.
I think a motion will approve the minutes of last week's meeting.
All in favor? Favor? Okay, um, next we have the town administrator weekly update.
Uh, just one item for you tonight is a statement from the fire chief in regards to the fire over on Sandborn Road. Um, so on Tuesday, August twelfth, the Acton Fire Department along with mutually extinguish and contain the fire on Sandborn Road, which at the time was approximately a half an acre in size. Several hours went by, personnel went back to address hotspots, everyone eventually cleared with the plan to return this morning, Wednesday, August thirteenth at seven thirty A M. At six twenty A M, dispatch contacted the Acton Fire Department to say that the fire had reignited. By the end of the day, today, the fire had grown to eight acres. As of now, it is fully contained, but it will be multi-day operation, smoke will be seen for some time. Resources from the entire county, parts of New Hampshire, state resources and state forest services have been on-site all day. The site will continue to be monitored throughout the evening and the fire is ongoing investigation the Forest Rangers working on trying to determine a cause. That's all I have.
Thank you for sharing that and just to everyone who was on-site and helped get that under control, thank you for all your work that you do. Um, with that, we are gonna move into our ideas on updates, starting with Ed.
Sure. Quick and easy, I have nothing. Um, with that, we'll move to John.
Second that.
Okay. Tom?
I was planning to meet with the confirmation committee last night, their meeting was canceled. It's been rescheduled to next Tuesday, I see. Depending on what time I get back, we'll be away from the day, I'll certainly try to make it. But you could let them know that I'll do my best, if not, I can make another time. Uh, today I spent some time with, uh, the treasurer, uh, town administrator and our accountant, external accountant, Mark Roy. And, um, went over in some detail the, uh, the calculation for the tax rate. And later on in the agenda, there's, there's an item for that and I'll review that at that time. That's it.
Thank you. Um, next we have David.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't have anything in cemetery or community municipal grounds. I did speak with the individual that's running the project for Grandin and about the ball field. And, uh, actually the next morning I pulled up my dump truck, he said, ooh, across the street. Um, I thought he did something bad.
Why are you there?
But, uh, but no, uh, he said, uh, a week or so, week or two, that they'll have everything out of there, they'll sprint the gravel, get it already better than it was when it left. He said, he did say the gravel on there is junk, so, you know, that's some good gravel.
It worked out our comment by. Even, you know, the sites they were staging on what, uh, all that crap was on.
And I did talk to him and, uh, about the, uh, apocalypse down below. And the plans are they're gonna have it all degraded for us. He says there is a big, big rock that might have been done something with, probably a jackhammer or something. But, but they will have that all elevated and pretty good shape for us to that point and.
So it'll be all set for soccer?
Yeah, all set for soccer.
Awesome, great timing. Um, is there any updates on the mooring?
Uh, I gotta talk to Mr. Dennis, see how the progress is coming here.
It looks good.
Yeah, I'm excited to see.
Yeah, he's still working on it to see what kind of date he's gonna give us.
Awesome.
I s- normally he's here when I come in, so I go over and, but, uh, he wasn't here today, so.
How about temperatures?
Ouch.
I wouldn't be doing that either.
They're not planning on any landscaping in there, are they? I, I know there'll be landscape, uh, hidescape work, but will there be any landscaping?
So, um, I did, I did tell him that I would volunteer to help him, we're supposed to lower the banking. And some grass growing there and, uh, I think there's gonna be some bark mulch.
And there's a tree that, um, they'd like to have a couple of, uh, branches taken down from them and we would be responsible.
It is kind of.
Wasn't that, wasn't that part of the?
No, I don't think, I mean, they're volunteering everything, so we would cover any costs right now.
Yeah, yeah, I thought there was, I thought there was.
We, we talked about like the beaches hanging down over, people can't see it.
Right.
So, um.
Once they're done in there, we should probably take a look at that and see if there isn't something we could do to spit it up and, you know, there's some landscaping.
I'm sure between our landscaper and even our volunteer, um.
Yes.
It's a road, maybe between the two of them, I bet they could boost that right up and.
Great. I'm excited to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I'm a little mad, I don't think I have anything else to, uh, update anybody about.
Um, that leaves me, planning board, I attended the planning board meeting this past Thursday, they elected their officers for the committee. Um, they also have a site, um, walk tomorrow at five A M, which I'm hoping to attend. Massamdam Coalition, we had a meeting yesterday at three P M, um, to talk about some tree removal, which was approved.
Were the Acton representatives there?
I was there, Adele was in.
Okay, so that's exciting, this morning everybody in for it.
Yeah, I sent, I sent her in, well, did I need to get to her?
Yes.
Okay. I thought the vote, I thought the vote.
No, no, it's fine, no, I, yeah, I.
I did, I did.
Cause I didn't have anyone reach out to them either.
Okay, I did, I did reach out to, um, Adele about getting this one in.
They haven't approved the budget yet?
No.
No.
This was just, this was, so it was, there was, um, some, some trees that they needed to be removed. They, they had money designated for a handicap rail and they wanted to switch it from that to go to the tree removal because they felt like that was a more immediate, immediate concern safety-wise. And then for the rec, um, they have a meeting this coming Tuesday, the eighteenth. Um, and the, the rec director is, they're still accepting applications for soccer. The, um, cutoff for that is the seventeenth. And a reminder that we are still looking, uh, we haven't had anyone come in, uh, we are still looking for three members to join the rec committee. So if anybody is interested, please reach out to the rec director, if you have reached out to the rec director and talked, please reach out to the town administrator so that we can schedule the time for you to come in and kind of do a little interview. Um, but with that, that is all that I have. And next we'll move on to department head and committee chair updates, which I don't see any, so. And then we'll go to old business, beginning with the tax rate. I'll head off to Tom.
Great, as you recall, last week we spent some time going over various scenarios for what the tax rate might look like and how we might use some of our undesignated reserves in order to keep the rate within reasonable means. Had a chance to go back now with, uh, the town administrator, uh, and the treasurer and again, Mark Roy to review all of the line items that go into making up the tax rate. And we're, we finalized that review, now these numbers are not finalized. And, uh, so I wanted to propose something for you folks today. You remember last week we were focusing on using a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, undesignedated reserves? That compares to a prior year amount of five hundred thousand. The reason it's lower is there's been a significant, there, there may be a significant use of reserves uh, for a variety of equipment pieces for the fire department if those get approved. Those will be seven hundred, seven hundred?
Seven seventy with the municipal snow plowing and everything.
Seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that will be used from reserves. So, um, we made a provision for that. So the hundred thousand dollars that we use that will bring us down to one point six million dollars in reserves. And the minimum threshold under our reserve policy is one point five and the max is two point four. So you can see between the use of that hundred and the potential use for the fire department, we will be very close to the minimum reserve threshold per our policy.
Potential for all the upcoming ballot questions.
I'm sorry?
The potential for all the September ballot questions.
Yes, yes, that's right, not just the fire department, thank you, Jennifer. So, um, let me, uh, we, I have a recommendation, uh, for the committee to consider. We do want, I suggest we stick to the use of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, of our designated fund balance to reduce the tax rate. Remember last week we were talking about a rate of seven twenty-five? That compares to a rate of seven dollars and seven cents in the country. That would have been a two and a half percent increase, as I recall.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, but that left a, there's this thing in the tax calculation called the overlay and it's really an amount that the state allows towns to use to create a little excess revenue for, uh, for use to cover.
Abatements.
Abatements and other kinds of things. We, we've not been using that, so last year that amount was how much, can you recall, about a hundred?
Two hundred thirteen thousand.
Two hundred thirteen thousand, way, I don't think we used any of it or very little of it. So what I'm proposing is that the, um, the overlay be reduced to thirty thousand dollars. Now, the tax calculation worksheet, it's actually a computer program, um, has suggested that the, uh, the minimum and maximum tax rate that the town could assess based on, um, the size of the budget, et cetera. And according to that, the minimum tax rate would be seven dollars and nineteen cents. The maximum tax rate would be seven dollars and fifty-four cents. That's compared to the prior year of seven dollars and seven cents. What I would recommend this year is the tax rate be set at seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That's, uh, roughly three cents, two cents over, um, the minimum amount that the state would recommend. Recommend or require?
Uh, required, minimum based on the appropriation.
The state would, would say you can't go any lower than.
No, it's appropriations, right.
Than seven eighteen, seven nineteen. I recommend that we commit a seven twenty-one, a little bit lower than what we had last year and that will leave us an overlay of thirty thousand dollars. So, um, there's a schedule here that I think is, uh, uh, very straightforward. That if this gets adopted, I would recommend we post this on the website, so that be full transparency for everyone in town to see what's going on. So I would make a recommendation that we adopt the tax rate, a, a, a motion to make, to adopt the tax rate of seven dollars and twenty-one cents and, uh, apply the use of a hundred thousand dollars from an undesignedated fund balance to provide the tax rate.
I was seconded.
Any discussion, questions, anything?
So, when you said a seven twenty-one, was it last year you meant lower than the last, what, week we were talking, seven, seven hundred?
Yeah, it was, it was seven oh seven, yeah, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Seven oh seven last year was the rate that was approved and used. Last week we spoke about seven dollars and twenty-five cents, but I think we can take it down a little bit more. And that's like a two percent increase.
Two percent, one point nine.
Two percent increase in taxes, which, you know, I think we should feel pretty good about.
Um, any questions or comments from the audience?
I mean, it's, you know, from the tax collector point, you, you've got to factor in the possibility of all September ballot questions passing. So when people ask why did we use five hundred thousand last year and only a hundred this year? It's because of those ballot questions in September, because if you used a higher amount and they pass, then we're gonna go well below the flesh of the.
Yeah.
So we can't do that, so you, it's absolutely the right recommendation.
Um, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
So Tom, you want this?
Thanks, Tom.
Tax commitment calculation, do you want the examples on there as well or just this?
No, I, I think just this would be fine.
This lays it all wrong.
Yeah, it's very straightforward and people can understand all of the gory details.
We'll prep all of the work and start thinking about tax bills, there's a good couple of weeks to get it all done.
Thank you, sounds like a great, great tax rate, but thank you to Tom and Lauren, or the town treasurer and the town administrator for your work. You know, you folks have been working on it for quite some time.
Well, I gotta tell you, Jennifer and Lauren and Mark who really did. I was able to come in and spend a few minutes looking at it and say, okay, take some holy water and move on.
I'm, I'm just grateful we have that expertise.
Actually, I'm.
About the tab. Such a.
But we need that holy water, just so you know.
Okay, um, that being said, we are gonna move on to Sheriff's car.
Okay, so over the last few weeks, we have been talking about the current, um, deputy vehicle that we share with the town of Shapley. Um, and we know that Shapley made an offer to us, um, looking to purchase it. And the last instruction from the select board was to have it looked at. Um, originally Shapley and Acton were gonna go with a, a mechanic that we both use for some, um, cosmetic work with some of our equipment. When I reached out to the deputy, he said, well, hey, we have a mechanic that looks at it every single day, which, I'm not sure, that often, but nevertheless, he looked at it, here's an email from Jamie Chadbourne. So, good morning, Jennifer, my name is Jamie, I'm the head mechanic and fleet coordinator for the sheriff's office. Deputy Samborn asked me to reach out to you regarding your current contract cruiser. I have been performing all of the service on the vehicle for the last six months. Mechanically, it runs okay. One thing you have to consider when looking at any vehicle is how many hours has a car sat in idle? The formula, the formula for that is every hour of idle time adds five miles to the vehicle. In your case, the cruiser has currently a hundred and forty thousand miles on it. When I look at the hours, when I look at the hour meter, it has almost ten thousand hours of idle time. That adds roughly forty more thousand miles to the vehicle, so it actually has a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. As far as the condition of the car overall, it's an average condition. It is starting to show signs of rust underneath on the inner and outer rockers. Also, most of the suspension in the rear as well. In my opinion, the car is at a point where it could start to cost money to keep it going mechanically. And with the rust, you may only get another sticker for a year or two. Taking all that into consideration, I would value the car right around four thousand dollars. Hope this is helpful, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Well, let's take the five thousand dollars and what?
Yes.
No, it appears two thousand.
It appears two thousand, David's absolutely right, they're, you know, um.
Have you shared that note with Shapley?
Yeah, I have to, I mean, they are hard to.
No, no, I wasn't.
I was surprised, yeah, I was surprised she wasn't, the administrator wasn't C C'd on it.
Yeah.
Originally, I mean, it is our car joint, they said, yes, of course, and, and they did lower their offer from twenty-five hundred, they did thousands based on that. I remember the, I mean, the sheriff's department hasn't, doesn't get a penny of that, so there, but this is one mechanic's.
And as a, as a fleet manager, they would have a pretty good idea, but this is worth, uh, cause they're in the business of trading in vehicles and so on.
Think you say he's been doing it for the last six months?
Well, he said that he was, he's been working on this vehicle for the last six months, yeah.
Yeah, that makes you just start it there.
He said. He's still, I assume he's got credentials.
I was more concerned that he's been performing, that he's gotten that much service in six months, but, you know, what he says, I've been performing all the service.
Need a service, I'm sure they get service.
Let's put it this way, I would suggest we use this as our minimum. So, um, in, in terms of, uh, it seems to be someone needs to negotiate, uh, a, the purchase of, or the sale of this with the town of Shapley. And, uh, would that be you, Jennifer?
I, I mean, I'm not sure how much negotiating there is, I mean, will you not accept their two thousand and sign off once we get the new one on premises?
Well, whatever, whatever it is, I would.
Is there much more to it, I mean, that's a fair number.
I assume you would, you would want to be authorized to.
Sure, but you can tell them what you're.
Conclude that sale?
What the minimum amount is, but you won't accept.
I'm confused, what are we doing?
We're deciding.
Well, he's talking about negotiating, but I'm wondering, is, how much negotiating is there? I mean, will you not take two thousand?
There probably isn't any.
If anything, they'll vote for us, why do I want them to give us?
Give certificate to release.
Couple of, couple of koozies?
I, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, somebody needs to be empowered to sell the vehicle.
I mean, the board is gonna have to sign the titles.
Yeah, sure, but somebody's gonna work out the deal, whatever it is.
We need to, I mean, we need to let them know if you want to sell it or if you're interested in keeping it. But we're not doing anything until the new car i- it's here and then suited and ready to go.
We don't need to vote anything tonight, then?
That's, it's up to you.
Kind of, we kind of do have to do sometime, try to figure out what, what our options are.
Okay, I, I suggest we take a motion that would authorize the sale of the vehicle to Shapley in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Okay.
So you're willing to.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, we want to get rid of it, so.
I was gonna, I thought, I thought it was something, I, I guess something you said before kind of confused me, I thought you were talking.
So authorize the sale and empower and ask the town administrator to.
Take our two thousand before the party.
To execute the, uh, the sale.
I take second to Tom's motion.
Okay. So we have.
Conversation.
Yeah, we have a first, second, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I thought they offered us twenty-five.
They did it till they saw this, I, I, I tried to get forty-five out of it today.
John said they lowered it once they got that.
I was trying to get a check before the party's any worse condition for two thousand. I mean, I, we've reached out to the sheriff's department and said, listen, how much longer is it gonna be? I mean, I'd like to move this along before, you know, it gets another twenty thousand miles on it.
Didn't they say a week or two ago that they've got a car that they can bring right in?
They said that, yes, cause originally Major Mitchell told us January.
Right.
So that's why we put this conversation off. Um, but after speaking to Samborn, he said that, that there were some twenty twenty-fives on site. So, they need it, they've got the okay from both towns, if the funds pass, you know, let's get it, shoot it up and.
So that motion is, is, uh, probably contingent upon approval of that article at town.
No, we gotta vote it on, remember we voted on it in June, so we're good to go.
Okay, excuse me, all right.
Okay, so, any other discussion on the motion?
Good.
Okay, all in favor, um, the motion to possess it about.
Sell the car in Shapley for two thousand.
Shapley, two thousand dollars.
Quickly.
Quickly.
All in favor? Any? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and the next thing we have on the agenda is the mooring ordinance.
So before you turn this over to Tom, I just wanted to make sure for the record, because I, um, you didn't communicate with my board as clearly as I should have. What you have in front of you is a draft that the town's attorney gave to the board. The board got it yesterday, some of them based on their work schedules, they will only be looking at it today. So there's absolutely no guarantee that this document, they haven't even reviewed it, so don't, you know, I mean, don't take this document to heart. They haven't gone through it, the code officer hasn't seen it, this is not, this is just a proposed first-run draft. Legal hasn't seen it, the state hasn't seen it, oh, I'm sorry, legal wrote it. But I just want to make sure and I apologize if I dumped the gun by someone in the public ass for it.
I, I, I was concerned about giving it to the public, you guys run it, this should have gone to a lawyer before we even got.
Well, the lawyer wrote it.
I mean, the lawyer is gonna sit, take it to state before we even got it, because, I mean, this could change.
Right, so keep that in mind, that this is absolutely a draft with nothing tied to it, so I apologize there.
So, so, um, what have they been, what's been distributed?
They have this draft.
They, they have the draft ordinance, okay.
Just a reminder, sorry, Tom, just a reminder that, like, with any ordinance, we're gonna go through if anything gets put forward, go through the proper channels, have a public hearing and do all those things, so just a reminder for that too.
And this really isn't a public hearing at all, right?
Yeah, it's just introduction.
Well, actually, that's probably all I really wanted to say was to lay out the process going forward, to make sure that you understood what you have and what we're gonna be doing with that going forward. We now have a draft, we'll have a chance to review that. I have some questions that I've gotta put to council and the board may as well. We may want to decide to, if you want, you can funnel those to me and I'll do it, or we can talk about how best they'll maybe to Jennifer, but I'm happy to follow up with it if you like. We then, once we get those comments in there, I think we need to, uh, share with the state and have them confirm that, uh, what we have here as drafted with the revisions is gonna be suitable to meeting state requirements. Um, I think once we have that, we'll take another look at it and then we would go through the public hearing process.
Assuming there aren't any changes, yes.
Yeah, assuming, uh, if there are any changes, but we would have a public hearing for it. Uh, we talked about sharing it with the lake associations. Now, uh, whether that's done as part of the public hearing process is not what we can talk about, but I think they represent a constituency that is broad enough for all of our lakes that I, I think that would be worthwhile to do a checking with them. I looked at it, it, you know, I have some, my own personal comments on them, but, you know, I, I know it's a work in progress and we'll work all that out and it's gonna be a compromise, whatever we come up with. It's gonna reflect, uh, generally the view of the community and, uh, cause that's who this is for, it's not for the selectmen, it's for the community.
And the code officer also has concerns, he loves to.
Yes, the code officer has some, so.
About things that he, you know.
I, I believe we have some folks here today that, uh, are here of interest to the mooring. Chair, what would you like to do?
First, I want to see if there's any comments from the board members. And if none, then I start any comments of anybody here from what we just shared.
So we're allowed to comment now?
Yeah, you can, you can come up and.
We're just gonna keep buying, it's not a public, it's not, I get it.
And then we haven't had a chance, but yeah, you folks came in.
So, my name is Nisi De Angelis and, um, I have a lot of concerns and I've been talking to the state and he was just saying how it just seems to go against state law, the mooring ordinance. And it's like, I have deeded, like, beach rights and one of the beaches, like, I'm on Rogers Cove and also I'm on Towboards, which is now Duffy Ward's property. And he bought the property four years ago and when he was buying it, well, he inherited it from Jens Towboard. And he came to us and told us, cause we all have deeded beach rights to his property. My mooring's been there twenty-seven years and he said, I have no problem with you guys, I honor your deeds. Soon as the papers changed, I want you off my property, you, I'm not honoring your deeds. I want you to move your mooring. I called the game warden, the game warden says, you don't need, you've had your mooring here for so many years, you don't have to move, nobody owns the water. So, he started kicking us off, off that side of our beach as well, calling the sheriff. We showed the sheriff all our deeds, the sheriff said, stop wasting my time, these people have deeds. So it's been a tug of war.
He said that to the, to the property owner?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, basically supporting what you were trying to do?
Yep.
Okay.
So this has been a tug of war with him and, um, like, I don't have money, like, I got a notice from Jason saying I'm in violation. I need to move my.
You didn't get an actual viol- you didn't get a notice violation?
Well, he said I was, I have the email here, he said I was in violation and I had fifteen days to.
I mean, it wasn't a certified letter, so you didn't get a violation.
Right, but it's like, I'm just saying.
He told you it couldn't happen, a violation could occur.
He told me it, like, I had fifteen days, cause I called him right away as soon as I got it. And it's like, well, you have fifteen days to move your mooring. And I'm like, I have no money to move my mooring, it's a thousand dollars to move your mooring. You know, I'm like, what am I supposed to do? So I took my ball off my mooring, cause I didn't even have the money to put my boat in the water this year. I have my bottle on it, cause I can't afford to lose my mooring either, so I'm stuck. And it's just like, you know, I talked to Deano and he's just like, well, you know, there's been a lot of this going on and, um, it's the, nobody owns the water.
You talked to Deano?
Yeah, he has.
Deano from Inland Fisheries? Oh, I know Deano, he's the same guy, so they own the water and then they cost us eighteen thousand dollars.
I'm just like, I have his email, he sent me a copy of the letter that he sent to town last year and everything and it's just like, I just, I just don't think the mooring ordinance is, I'm like worried about all of us that do have deeded water rights. And I know, I used to be rescue chief on Acton and I used to go to a lot of homes to have backlots and have deeded access to the water and what's happening, what's gonna happen to all of us? All of a sudden the property owner tells all of us we can't, you know, I'm like, this guy has a personal agenda with me. Cause my mooring's been there for so long, he has an agenda with me. But it's just like, what's gonna happen down the road when this ordinance goes through and like all the property owners say, you can't have your mooring in front of my property.
And so, um, I think that's kind of the reason why we're looking at those mooring ordinance, Mike had it kind of go through legal, why we're kind of working on this process. I do also want to name that, um, I hear you got that email, but I also did see emails from the town administration CEO clarifying that that.
Yeah, we started including everybody, so you all could see what was going on.
But I, I do know that they did clarify that that wasn't gonna happen. I do know that our CEO has been working hard with flexibility and explained that this, we're in a weird gray space right now and I think he's done an incredible job of knowledge in that and working with those on the lake and trying to navigate this. I, I do recognize it is a complicated, weird situation and that is why I think we've had many people working on this to try to get it.
You said that our mooring ordinance breaks state law?
He said like, the property, the property owner is now gonna get, have control over who's gonna have moorings in front of their property.
So Deano says that that breaks state law?
He was saying he had.
Well, you said it earlier, I was, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think we were breaking any state law.
No, that's not, yeah, that's not.
Because the problem we're having is here is the state won't come down and tell us exactly what they want.
Or write the ordinance.
So they're playing us, so, and other charities.
Well, I'm, I got all, I have his email and I have a copy of the letter.
Yeah, I understand that. My, my frustration is, it's, it's so easy for inland fishery to come in and say, you're doing wrong, when they won't give us a solution.
Right, he told, he, he didn't tell me the town, says, well, will you revise our ordinance? And he's like, we cannot revise, you have to have, you revise the ordinance and you submit it to the state. And like, I talked to him yesterday and he's like, nobody's.
But if the state doesn't have something to tell us what we're allowed to do, then we can keep revising this and then they just, they could change their mind like inland fisheries does.
Let me say, can I say something?
Yeah.
I, I understand the issue with, uh, you know, right of ways, deeded rights to the water, um, shared communities that have shared, you know, backlots that have shared beaches and so on. And, um, uh, there's some provision. And, um, uh, there's some provision for that in here. That's something that I think we're gonna take a high look at, 'cause for, that is where most of the comments have come from. Quite frankly, I think most, uh, when it comes to a typical, um, you know, shore owner, um, where those issues are present, I think the mooring ordinance in general is fine. It's more around these issues, and we'll take a high look at it, and.
Yep.
I'm, I'm very aware of the, your situation.
Yes, it's like hard, because we try to work with them.
Well, we're not trying to do anything to you at this point, right?
No, but it's just like, I have that fear, I haven't slept since I got the first letter, I have not slept.
Yeah, but, I mean, we gotta, and, and I don't, I'm not playing down what happened at all, but the code officer told you in the email that you could be in violation, and this could be what happened with this. Email also said that until you get a certified letter, that's within the fifty days, so you haven't received that, so.
But I was hoping on the phone, and that's what he told me, "Well, you got fifteen days to move your mooring."
Yeah, that's not, I mean, according to him.
Me, I sent, me, I sent him.
And she knows that she has to get a letter, no letters have been sent out. You can refer to the current mooring ordinance that is in place, it's on the town's website, it talks about violations, and it very clearly says, "Until the code officer does this, the fifteen days don't start," so.
Right.
That might have just been mis- misunderstanding from what he said, but don't lose sleep, don't, I mean, nothing, I know, I heard. And I'm just saying that just, nothing, we saw the last email.
She was trying, I think he was trying to be helpful, he was trying to help you out.
Absolutely, he's trying to be very helpful.
It's just, you know, it's, I have this hanging over my head.
Read the ordinance, and you'll see, and read the last letter sent by myself and the code officer, everything is just, we're gonna give this some time to sort it out.
Right, and it's just like, you know, this guy has a personal agenda.
Well, we're not gonna.
I was gonna say, it doesn't sound like the mooring ordinance, whether that's passed or that could come forward, is really what initiated your issue, it was between you and the property owner. And so, that has nothing to do with the mooring, and hopefully the ordinance will clarify, um, and provide you clarity about what you can and can't do.
Is there anything in here that, for grandfather and mother father?
Nothing in here.
Because that's one problem we're gonna have with this.
I have pictures, I have pictures of my boat on my mooring from twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
But I mean, you got a deeded right of way, right? And then you have all these moorings that have been there for thirty years, and now you're deciding kicking them out, that's gonna be a big problem.
And I think we'll, we'll cross that when we get to that point, but like, we haven't had much time to have this center of state.
Thank you.
We do appreciate you sharing your concerns. Can you come up to the podium?
Yep.
But thank you for coming and sharing your concerns.
Hi, my name's Alice LeBro, and, um, forty-four Jericho Way, and we also have a shared beachfront, I write that, with Denise. I haven't read this one, okay, that just came out. I just wanna say, as you're reviewing it and going through the process, um, the ordinance, in my opinion, really has to accommodate irregularities, quirks or unique situations that are in the lakes, whether it's coves andlets, backlots, the narrows, you know, and if it can't somehow accommodate all of this, um, you know, I'll be one of the saying, "Can we revoke it at an appropriate time?" So I just wanted to say that our cove area.
And that's come up, that, that word's come up.
There's a bunch of those up there.
Yeah, and if you, you know, if you have your boundary line and you're going out, we're crossing out in the water, and it's just a real mess. So, thank you, all right?
Yeah, thank you, and I, I think one of the reasons why I haven't passed my complications, is 'cause the state hasn't done what they said they would years ago, having an ordinance, because they recognize that this lake is so unique.
State is very good at telling you how to do your job.
They don't like what we did, but they won't give us the license.
That's definitely something we've recognized and appreciate, chair.
Hi, Jay Ward, uh, one forty-seven Atten Road, and, um, so I, I guess we're not gonna talk about the draft, but there's a lot of concern there about, um, your annual fees and them providing another position in town. It looks like it could be a full-time position, at least for six months. Um, so, I have real concerns with the current draft. But my question is, is there an ordinance in effect today? And if there is, isn't that letter that went out appropriate? And under the, the current statute, are you going to enforce that?
So we did vote, was it a couple weeks ago?
There, there is an ordinance in place, yes, the select board do not have the authority to.
Change.
To, to change it, nor say that it's being enforced or not enforced, it is on the books. What we're saying is that the code officer is prioritizing his workload, you know, the mooring ordinance is not the only thing on his, on his plate. There are lots of violations and complaints in every day, building and plumbing permits that he's dealing with. So it's not that he's enforcing it or not enforcing it, he's prioritizing his workload while we sort through some of this. But it is on the books legally, yes.
Right, but it was suspended for a while, and then you chose to bring it back.
We were in a little bit of a quagmire there, Jay, because we had passed something to that, our lawyer had wrote up for us, that was legit. We passed it, then come to find out the state come jumping in like last second, after it was all passed, um, because another town nearby, their lawyer sent it to the state, and they said it wasn't no good. And come to find out, there's other towns just like us who have the same ordinance, okay? So it really put us in a really bad spot, when you have all these other towns that have the same ordinance, everybody's like, "Kumbaya", and then the state rolls in and says, "Nope, you're bad, no, well, we can't enforce it." If the state says it's, it's, you shouldn't be doing this, so, oh, he just didn't take it as a priority, we're trying to sort it out in between.
But, but then why did we reinstate the ordinance?
Because we should have never suspended it in the first place, the board didn't have the right to suspend it. That was the word, was the wrong choice of words, and it wasn't suspended, it was just giving the code officer a chance to review it while we looked at the state's letter, and determined, determined how to deal with the state's letter.
We had taken a vote to suspend it.
Correct.
And we did not have that authority, because it is an ordinance that has been passed by the town speaker. So we reversed our, our previous vote to suspend it, and so it's back in its original position.
Shouldn't suspend and not enforce, that would have been a little bit.
They can't do either, essentially, because it's an ordinance.
The ordinance has enforcement in it, and so, it's, it's reinstated, it, it was never not in effect, but basically the board reversed its action, and now we're taking steps to review that, and try to put forth an ordinance, or not, put forth an ordinance that will be acceptable to the state and to the town.
So I hope you can understand the consternation that that causes people? When you say, "We're not going to enforce, we've suspended, but now, all of a sudden, a year later, you're back on the, that it's an ordinance, and it's enforceable."
Well, I, I'm just trying to explain it to you, I hope you understand.
No, you did, but, but, do you understand what I'm saying is, that all of a sudden, now you, you reignited the issues that were then put to bed, but you chose to do it in such a way where there's, we know this is gonna have to be reworded.
I don't think anybody here doesn't understand that, I think, 'cause we're just, we're not having properly, like, not that capacity for it, but we are frustrated, because as, as, um, David has named, this was a situation that we thought, like you said, put to bed. So we're also frustrated, because we hear your frustrations, we hear everybody who calls the town, who sends us emails, and we wanna try to resolve this to the best of our ability, so we, we also understand somewhat the frustrations, we're frustrated trying to navigate this.
It was two different ways, there's two different ways of looking at it. If we enforced it, then we enforced what we should have, that was worse than if we just had left it alone, to see if we can get this taken care of. We just didn't wanna create any more issues on top of what we'd already created.
So we, we under.
Right, I, I agree with you, that, that's the way it should have been.
Yeah, I guess maybe we didn't, I don't know, give me some advice, Jay, I, I mean, I need it right now.
Don't send out emails that, because, because it inflames both sides, right?
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Because they, everybody all thought that this was not an issue, but now it's a back of an issue, but it's really not, because you're still looking at it.
Yeah, I don't believe anybody's got any fines or made anybody do anything, it's not being a fault for them.
But the, the letters went out, that suggested that that's what was going to happen, because you're in violation, right?
There was a conversation, there's a verbal conversation between the code officer and one of the property owners, and that was followed up in the email, the words might have been chosen a little differently, but at the end of the day, as I understand it, it was very clear that the certified letter had to go out before any enforcement was put into place. So both parties knew that that hadn't happened. I mean, when, when she responded, I responded to everybody, including all the state representatives that she put in there, and we laid out a very clear timeline, I mean, this was voted on in April, by June, we got notice of the state, you know, the attorney immediately started jumping on it, now it's winter, so people thinks it's died down, because mooring isn't addressed in the winter. As soon as it came back up, we've immediately started dealing with it again, so.
I, I feel that at the end of the day, what has happened has happened, I think what's most important is, as a board, we are working diligently to try to resolve this, and I think, I mean, I think we've been pretty fair and open about this process, and in the future, we could have handled it differently, no one's gonna deny that, but I hope you can look at how hard we as a board are working on trying to find some sort of resolution to this.
The, the best way it would have been to have a special town meeting, and the only way we could have done that, and had done a, a vote to revoke the ordinance for a, a short period of time, until the new one's done. We didn't do that, 'cause we were hoping to have something in between done, we didn't, you know, this is a pretty sensitive subject to some people, and we, we're trying to get this taken care of, obviously, uh, it's not working out so well, but.
But the voters, you know, they did pass it in April, so it's right, you know, they had to, you know, it's, it's on the books.
Yeah, right.
So we understand, we're not gonna aggravate anything further.
We're all gonna be honest with how, you know, how it's come to this, there's nothing better than a moment.
Would you suggest, if you've opened suggestions, that you refine this pretty quickly, because this is out there now, right? And there's a lot of parts in it that are very, very concerned.
We, we already, I think some of the things you've addressed, we've already briefly touched upon in a few minutes.
I haven't addressed the things that.
What I would really love out of you, Jay, is go through that, email your town administrator the suggestions.
I will do that.
That'd be awesome.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you for.
More info we can get, maybe we can get through this.
Great, thanks.
To Jay, I don't think you'd come, oh, I'm sorry, can I?
You can, you can talk privately when I'm in the room, but not in the.
Well, why don't you repeat what you said, that Jay wasn't here to hear?
Come, come, come on up, or just.
Yeah, no, yeah, you can, you wanna come up and.
Alice LeBro again.
No, 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 no.
Pony.
The cameras.
I'm sorry, there were some people who came after it had been announced, that this draft is so unofficial, and has to go through steps A to Z, that it really shouldn't be out to the public.
So if you wanna leave them all on your chairs, all right, that's fine. Just leave them on your chairs and do us the favor of.
Everybody do, you don't, it doesn't say draft.
It does say.
It does, all right, so it's a draft.
Just leave them on your chairs.
Please don't share.
We've just, we've just seen this for the first time.
But it is a public document in all fairness.
I just had one more comment, so, um, you had decided to do this July twenty-third, and Jason got hold of me July twenty-fourth. I just wanted to say, like, now there's like a complication, is, um, Neil Duffy put a doc on July twenty-fourth out next to my mooring, and his, his deed shows that he's not supposed to put a doc out. I have a copy of his deed, so it's like now he has added problems, so even.
That's a, that's a matter.
Right, but I just wanna make that comment, 'cause he expected my mooring to move, and I put that there.
That's a legal matter that you have, yeah.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment?
William Carroll, one forty-seven, had approved. I just have one question, why is the town involved in the moorings?
Well, this came about, uh, based on a conversation one of the, um, lake owner association members had, I believe it was DEP, or it could have been something to do with, uh, the person in charge of harbor masses, and they asked, "Do you have a mooring ordinance in town?" And the answer was, "No," and he says, "Well, you really should have one." And so that started a look to see what the mooring ordinances were like, they set other towns at them, and in fact, they do have them. Many of the nutmen, but a number of towns with lakes have mooring ordinances. I think, uh, you may have read in the papers, in some situations, some lakes, they're having, they're having issues with, um, people dropping moorings, uh, and tying up their boat relatively close to people's properties. And without a mooring ordinance, there really isn't anything that regulates it. Now, as, so, I think that was the, the primary issue, and also to make sure that navigation was not affected, because there was no, the only regulation is you can't have a mooring beyond two hundred feet. Beyond that, it was the Wild West, anybody could do anything they wanted, whether you were a property owner on the lake, or whether you were just someone visiting the lake. And so we felt a mooring ordinance was appropriate, given the importance of lakes to the town of Acton, and, uh, so many residents here, and non-residents had property on the lakes. We thought it was something that would, uh, be of value to those individuals that make a great contribution to the town, and we wanna make sure that we don't do anything that in any way detracts from the, the, the valuations and the attractiveness of our lakes. That's it, that's the, that's really what it was about.
So that's essentially how the conversation started, I mean, from there, you know, the select board just, you know, did what they should do in these kind of situations, they put on a ballot, and let the voters decide, and there's a lot of things that they put on ballots that they may not.
More than that, I mean, the lake association started telling them.
Oh, right, I was gonna say, a lot, they got a lot of input from people, but.
And they pushed hard for it, and we all thought it was a pretty good idea at the time.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, what kind of overlap is there with the state?
Uh, this, as I understand it, the state has basically delegated to the towns the ability to regulate moorings, period. It's now an issue for the towns, but they have some regulation that act as guidelines for how that should be done. And I think the state looked at ours, and they felt that our policy and other towns was not consistent with those guidelines and regulations, I'm not sure what they.
Because the.
It's sponsored, it's sponsored, the state wants, they wanna make sure there's a ten percent area for, uh, non-residents, so they can moor in certain spots, and we're, we're supposed to regulate that. And by the permit process that happens.
That was an issue, right.
And, uh, so for boat equity, I guess, I don't.
That's exactly it.
Okay.
Do you think that's the word that they use?
Yeah, that's the word they use, so, um, so what it is, is they don't, they don't, the, the state doesn't want the property owners on the lake to think that they own the lake, they want everybody else to go come and do their thing too, so they wanna make sure that everybody gets a fair shake, in their eyes.
All right, well.
That's why we're not, that's why our ordinance doesn't.
Have a permit.
Because we didn't have a permit process.
That was the biggest issue.
That was the letter that she referenced, that the town received a year ago, that was the concern in it. So we didn't have a permitting process, so you don't really.
It doesn't appear to me there's been any consideration for associations. You know, I have a deed that, in reality, it makes me, along with twenty of my neighbors, owners of that font.
But you, but you don't own the water anyways, right?
No, I'm not, the beach, I'm just talking about the beach, and right, you know.
You own, you own, the state owns, and this is my biggest gripe in this whole thing, is the state owns to the hundred-year watermark, right?
Right.
'Cause I mean, I'll tell you a story, you know, 'cause I know people who own their property think they own the water too, and you know, when they got their little signs around the lake saying, say, ten feet offshore, love them.
Well, that's a universal problem.
Yeah, exactly, okay, but, you know, we're, we're in this area where, you know, we're not considering you guys, well, the problem is state's saying, "We're not considering everybody else that doesn't own all the lake." That's the problem, whether or not, I, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, I think this problem, um, uh, this is a state problem. Should be a state problem, but now that it's out there, you know, we gotta deal with it. And, uh, uh, the, the, the lake association, we have dealt with the lake associations, they, most of them have been here, and they were here during all our public, uh, uh, hearings and all that, when we're doing this mooring ordinance, and, and they were all foreign. Most of them, I know.
Spoke at town meeting, favor of it.
And even with the process coming up, I think towns think that we would like their input on the new.
And I don't, I don't own property in the lake, so it's tough for me to, I don't have any target, you know. Hey, you know what, I guess it would be the same idea if somebody parked their car in front of my house, you know, I guess, same idea in a different way, I guess, but, um, so we, we're gonna work through this and try to make it so it works for everybody.
Well, they packed the trailer in front of your house.
Yeah, they do.
And they were partying on my.
Yeah, exactly, you know, same idea, you know, and we just had that happen, someone moved in, they parked across the street, created traffic hazard, I dealt with it, you know, but, um, aside the point. Um, but we'll, we'll deal with this, we'll try, we're gonna try to make this right, if not, the town will vote it down, and we won't have one. One or the other.
Uh, I think the, the state should definitely be, be in the middle of this, and I'd like to know where we can, where can I get a copy of their recommendations?
So, I can give you a copy of the letter that they sent us a year ago, there's no recommendations.
There are no guidelines, there are no guidelines.
I mean, I haven't read it for a year, but I can, I mean.
Told me that they.
One thing, the one thing they mentioned was, that's the only thing they mentioned in town. One thing, the one thing that I mentioned was the problem, that's the only thing they mentioned, they didn't tell us anything else because it's our problem, but no, cause they're.
Stop in the next day or so and I'll give you what we received a year ago. So you can see it anyways. If it was as easy as add A, B, and C, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, you, you should be, we should be able to go on the main state website. It should have listed right there what we ought to do.
Well, that's in fact what we did.
The state has already said that they're not gonna take this up into session.
They were supposed to do it, I think.
So they're leaving it to all the towns.
Excuse me.
So maybe, you know, at the end of the year we'll vote and how the board boards the question.
Well, I just think the associations need, need to be key in the writing of all this because they are players in the whole thing.
Actually, I think the state would rather see the opposite because the associations are people who own on the, on the lake. They don't want the people from out of town on their lake, so they're trying to do the opposite. That's the problem.
We're not worried about people a lot of the time. We're worried about people trying to get rid of people that have a right to be there.
Understand.
That's, that's a discussion that, again, as this goes forward and once we get revised, that's a discussion that we had about how this draft works. But definitely take into consideration, I think we already have parameters to include associations in one way or another. Thank you. Anyone else have any?
My name's Keith Hart and I live on Acton Ridge Road and I'm part of the, the.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be.
Keith Hart, I live on Acton Ridge Road and I'm a member of the Rogers Brook Association. I, I've been to the meetings here. I, I heard Dave say quite some time ago when this was first brought up, you know, the, the mooring ordinance that, you know, he didn't have much interest in it. But one of the questions I had was, or it's a concern, is if a person pays high property taxes and chooses to live on the lake, why should he have more influence with the, with the selectmen as, as far as, you know, input? And, and I heard you mention that, that they pay a lot of taxes on the lake. Well, I choose to live at the top of the hill, they choose to live on, on the lake. They do not own the water and there's people on back lots and it's happening all over Grady's Lake and other lakes and it's happening nationwide, that somebody just doesn't like a boat in front of their property because they, they're, they have a patio there, whatever, their, their kids wanna swim. And that person has it right away. And I, I, I'm trying to see if, if, you know, in this ordinance, if, if that comes into consideration that someone has it right away. Because where are they gonna park? They're gonna park their boat in front of somebody's property. And so I, you know, I, I, I just, I didn't like that comment that, that, you know, that they pay a lot in property tax. Okay, so good for you, you've got, you've got property on the lake, but nobody owns the lake. I understand if somebody's blocking another person in, but in defense of Denise, I saw a letter from Duffy, for instance, because we've talked about him, that, well, his dog likes to play fetch and the boat's in the way. He's got a hundred feet of, of beach. And to me, that's not a good reason to have it, have it moved. But under the ordinance, he has, he has control in front of his property. So I, I just think they should look at the fact that in coves, I'm not sure. I, I think our cove has, has caused the most concern, you know, the problems. The mooring ordinance doesn't seem to work where we're all being, the property lines running parallel intersect. And if I look at, if I look at, in using Duffy's example, he's like at a ninety degree to us. Well, a hundred feet in front of, of his property is, puts us out in front of our, our, our beach there. So my concern is, is he gonna stop at one boat? Is he gonna say it when all the boats move? So I, I just, I hope you look at that and you have voiced the fact that you're gonna look at that, that situation.
We definitely are, I think that's something we've already, we've already named to other people's concerns and concerns.
Both me not being interested, I don't think that. Pardon? You made a remark that I said I wasn't interested or I didn't have interest.
No, last year you said that, that, that one or the other selectman was, uh, had initiated a mooring ordinance or, or helped.
I don't know if I said that, but I, I, I mean, it, it was brought to our attention. I don't, Tom, I don't believe Tom or anybody here said, you know, let's go do a mooring ordinance. It was brought to us first.
Yeah, wasn't.
And then he may have proceeded on to looking at it.
Okay.
But, uh, but when I say I have no interest in it, I mean, I got a lot of interest in this for the simple reason is, is, uh, anytime we pass an ordinance in the town of Acton and, and you guys have all heard me say this, you never pass an ordinance you can't, you can't force. Okay, and I'm just. Well, anytime you have right of ways, back lots, twenty, thirty year old moorings that have been out there for whatever, you know, I, I don't like creating, uh, opening up a can of worms and not needing, but it's already open, that's the problem.
And in regards to some of the, the other, I think it's just anyone else is, is, I think these questions, concerns valid, important. We wanna hear them. But I think wait until we actually have a draft that is out because they might be addressed as we've named. There's things that like, I've gone through this that I don't agree with, there are questions that I would have been back to legal. We have to have the state. So again, these things that we're concerned about, let's wait until we get an actual draft that we're gonna put forward and see if they're addressed. And then if they are, problem solved, not that, then that would be the appropriate time to bring some of these up. But we, I think from what I've heard from this board is that we are very adamant about, adamant about hearing all perspectives. I mean, that's where the premises was supposed to go and to make sure people who don't have, own property on the lake. So, you know, we're doing our due diligence and, and working hard on this, but we do appreciate everyone sharing your concerns. But give us the chance to actually put a draft forward that hopefully will address some of these concerns that I have.
The point I was making was I, I see both sides. But, but I, I would like to see somebody with the right of way or, or to be represented in, in the order.
Point taken.
Yeah, definitely, definitely have that. Thank you. Is anyone else who wants? Once? Twice? Okay, we are gonna move on then to new business, starting with the emergency operations point.
Finalization.
Alright, so for the staff, for the past several, several months, the emergency management director has been working with the board's selectmen and all of the department heads to develop this EOP. We've had several meetings, the department heads have made their changes, they took into consideration your changes. Everybody has reviewed it and seen it, so tonight we're looking to adopt it as written and get it finalized.
So do they hear a motion?
Motion or something. Emergency management operations plan as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Um, just wanna thank our, um, EMA director Phil and all the department heads and every person who's worked on this. It's, it's, I think when we first hired Phil, this was a big plan that he had in getting this put forward. I know it's taken a lot of time to work, so I wanna recognize that, we haven't had this in the past, so it's pretty exciting.
I think it's gone, it went a lot quicker than I thought it, at least, at least I thought it would. He moved right along with it, it felt well.
Um, with that, we will move into liquor license.
This is a one-day event for a wedding on August thirtieth at two forty-eight Mills Road, being put on from Above and Beyond Catering, one of our regulars, liability insurance, state application fee, everything has been paid. Remember, it's just all done online, so nothing to sign, just a verbal motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a liquor license application for a call. Above and Beyond Catering for an event to be held, what was it, August?
August thirtieth.
August thirtieth, and that's not popping out in me.
Next day, it's on the next page.
Oh, August thirtieth.
Sorry, it's a big handle.
Seconds, all in favor?
Good, I'll take your call.
You don't need to sign on that, okay?
All left on it now.
And that is it for new business, just for pending, so still in process is the transportation daily.
Yeah, and I did, if I can mention real quick, I'm scheduling two public hearings for August twenty seventh. I think so's a Wednesday, so we need time to notify them. For Heinrich Campground is going to start, hoping to sell beer and wine. And then Willie's Ale Room will have their annual liquor license renewal, so we'll do them both in the same night.
October twenty seventh. Um, and with that, we will move into public comment, if there's anybody who has any public comment that they would like to share. With that, I do one thing, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who did come out to talk about the mooring. I, I want everyone to know that we as a board recognize that this is a complicated issue and we appreciate your patience with us and that we are working on trying to move this forward. So I do appreciate you coming up, anticipating your voice is important and we appreciate it. With that being said.
Take a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
Seconds.
All in favor? Seven to one.